Call the meeting to order, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette? Yes. Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item will be the moment of silence led by Board Vice President, Mr. Jerry Denton.
As we begin this meeting, let us pause for a 60-second moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or engage in other silent activity.
Thank you. Next item will be the pledge of allegiance led by fifth grade student at Liberty Elementary, Javett Tomas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, just as for all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Great job.
Thank you.
How's your school year? Been a good one?
Yeah. It's been really fun, mostly because of my teacher.
Oh, that's good. Can you tell us who your teacher is?
Ms. Brown and Ms. John.
Awesome. So what's your favorite subject in school?
Math.
Math. You looking forward, what middle school are you going to? And are you looking forward to that? And tell us why?
I don't know what middle school I'm going at this moment, though, because I'm being moved, probably.
Okay. Well, we're glad you're here tonight. You did a great job. And you got any plans this summer? You all mean days are left in school? Like, you know we're at the end here.
I think 14 or 15 days.
There you go. I like it. Got any big plans this summer?
Not really.
Well, keep working on that math. It'll pay off.
Okay.
Do you have some guests here tonight that you'd like to introduce?
Uh, family.
Family. Go ahead and introduce them one by one. Let's show them off.
Okay. My littlest one, he's six, and his name is, now how many goes to the same school as me? And the biggest one, he's in, he goes to Anita, and he's seventh grade, and his name is Joel.
Great.
And my mom is a mom.
That's awesome. Well, thank you for coming tonight. You did a great job. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mom, do you want to come down here, Mom? Mom, do you all want to come down here and get a picture with Mr. Perry? She's his mom. She's got the hardest-to-have mom. Javett, great job. Hey, Javett. Nice job, man. Good job. Mr. Perry, it's always nice to have special guests like that. You just never know what response you're gonna get.
I love it.
So it's great. Okay, next item on the agenda will be the approval of the April 10th board meeting minutes. Any discussion?
We'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette? Yes. Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Abstain. Next item. Ms. Kaiser? Ms. Kaiser? I'm sorry.
Kaiser.
Kaiser?
Good evening, President Allen and Mr. Perry and members of the board. In keeping with our core value of embracing the responsibility of our calling, we wish to recognize two of our health services team members tonight for their quick action in response to medical emergencies at their school sites this year. I'd like to introduce Rachel Bowser, who is the school nurse at Broken Arrow High School, and Belinda Tatro-Ryzenner, who's the health aide at Aspen Creek Early Childhood Center. You ladies will stand. Ms. Bowser is being recognized tonight because she identified the need for and administered a life-saving drug, which was crucial to the stabilization of a student. And Ms. Ryzenner aided a staff member who was experiencing a medical emergency. She provided rescue breaths and utilized the school's AED machine. And then she also coordinated efforts when first responders arrived at her school site. These ladies are wonderful examples of the nurses and the health aides who serve our schools. And as you may already be aware, Wednesday is National School Nurse and Health Aide Appreciation Day. And we believe that it's a great opportunity to express just how incredibly grateful we are for these ladies and the rest of our health services team because they all choose to embrace the responsibility of their calling every day when they care for our kiddos and our staff members. So just wanted to recognize those ladies.
Just want to say thank you. And the nurse's office is a busy place at most of our school sites. And it's, you've got to have a love for kids to be in those roles. And it's very, I'm sure, tiresome at times, but it pays off. And these are two great examples. And we're proud to recognize you tonight and that you're part of Broken Arrow Public Schools.
Absolutely.
I want to thank you as well. Personally, it's nice to know that we have well-trained people in our buildings that can administer the life-saving services that you all did. I just experienced this personally with a very good friend of mine, and their son went down into cardiac arrest during a practice session and had to be resuscitated. And the trained athletic trainer saved his life. So just want to thank you all for what you do. It means a lot. And knowing our kids are in safe hands every day. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Blackburn. Okay, Ms. Brassfield. You're getting up, and I didn't see her back there. He threw me off, Ms. Brassfield. I apologize.
That's okay. Mr. Allen, President of the Board, members of the board, Mr. Perry, I'm excited to present this award to our principals and some teachers here. When I called the principals to see if they could come, they were so excited, and they said, "Can we bring teachers?" Absolutely. So this is the Imagine Learning School of Excellence Award. Out of 27 awards nationwide, four of the awards are going to Broken Arrow Public Schools. So that's quite an accomplishment. So this award is given to the schools that use the program with fidelity, show great growth, and have a really good implementation plan. So we're really, really excited. I have Lupita here from Imagine Learning that's gonna give out some banners. And I'd like to introduce the four sites and the principals. So we have Carrie Cody at Aspen Creek, and she has some teachers she would like to introduce.
So I have an incredible staff. I brought some of our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers with me. Stephanie McMillan, just wave. Jana Proctor, Shelley Cooper, Caroline Blevins, Amber Toll, Kiana Waters, Hannah Richard, Julie Reynolds, and then our assistant principal is also here, Michelle Johnson. Good job, guys.
And then we have Jana Williams from Oak Crest.
And I have amazing teachers at Oak Crest. I have one from each grade level tonight representing Oak Crest. So if you would, stand and wave. Fifth grade, Brandy Smith. Fourth grade, Courtney Pierce. And she brought little Kaplan with her. It's his first board meeting. Yes, there he is. And third grade teacher, Beth Brown. So good job, teachers. They're the ones really influential in the classroom.
Okay. And then we have Chris England from Creekwood.
Thank you. This evening, I would like to recognize my right-hand, my assistant principal, Leanne Frye. Katie Lynn Piles, who's actually one of our top users in the building. She teaches third grade. And then I brought along my title assistant and my title math teacher, who also do a great job of doing it through our RTI process. My assistant is Alicia Weaver, and Erin Doherty is one of our title teachers.
And then we have Elizabeth Early, representing Laura Orr at Liberty. And she does not have anyone with her today.
Yes, I do not have teachers, but I can tell you how amazing our Liberty Elementary teachers are. They're so supportive and amazing. But my name's Elizabeth Early, and like she said, I'm the assistant principal here at Liberty Elementary.
Okay, so would everyone like to come up and grab a picture real quick, and we'll present the banner? And I do want to announce Becky Bowman is here. Becky is the one that is helping with the implementation of Imagine Learning, Language Lit, and Math.
When all you teachers get up here now. I know, you got a part of Rattan. Great job. Ms. Brassfield. First, I want to thank all your principals and these amazing teachers, because I know that this may not get in the local news or newspaper, but it's really nice to see the amazing work that goes on in our sites every day and the impacts being made. And I just wish and be my hope that the media could come and follow some of this stuff that goes on, the real stuff, the things that mean the most. So I just want to tell you thank you, and we appreciate what each one of them do every day.
Thank you. Thank you. It's an amazing program that helps with literacy and math. The teachers can make different pathways, work with their small group instruction. And they really, the teachers do a phenomenal job, you know, asking the parents to do some of the programming at home. And so that's why we got this award for these sites, is our teachers are encouraging our parents, our parents are encouraging our kids, and we're getting the job done.
Well, I'd encourage our legislators to come see what these people are doing in these classrooms every day when they want to make decisions about the budget.
Yes.
And see what they're doing. So I just appreciate their job.
Thank you.
Next item, number seven, Mr. Dunn.
Yes, sir. President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. Tonight, I'll be presenting a discussion motion, a vote-on motion to approve or disapprove the offer of employment to an individual to serve as Executive Director of Athletics. And tonight, it's my honor and privilege to make a recommendation of Dr. Dustin Smith to serve as our Executive Director of Athletics here at Broken Arrow. Dustin is currently at Greenwood Public Schools in Greenwood, Arkansas, a place where he's been for the last seven years. In that seven-year timeframe, the Bulldogs have accomplished, you know, quite a bit under his leadership. He would be the first to tell you that it's a result of hard work of kids and coaches. And that's one of the most enduring parts about Dustin in the way that he leads. It's to serve so others can shine. In the last seven years, they have won 22 state championships in 11 different programs. Prior to his time at Greenwood, he was the athletic director at the University of Arkansas Fort Smith for nine years. Again, just a lot of team accomplishments and individual accomplishments, nine conference championships, two regional championships, multiple trips to the Elite Eight and Final Fours. And he became one of two A.D.s in the country to lead a junior college from Juco status to NCAA Division Two. He's currently serving as the president-elect of the Arkansas High School Athletic Administrators Association, serves on the National Board of Directors for the NIAA, which is, you know, the governing body for high school athletics, interscholastic athletics across the country. But above all of that, just a culture guy, you know, someone who's going to be a great fit with an incredible athletic department, an incredible staff of coaches, and the best student athletes in Oklahoma. So it's my easy privilege to make a recommendation of Dr. Dustin Smith.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Mr. Dunn, we want to thank you for you and your staff and whatever process you went to, because it sounds like you went and got a phenomenal candidate. And wow, I mean, top-notch. It's pretty exciting to see what you all have been able to recruit. So thank you.
And Dustin and his family are here tonight from Greenwood?
So, Dr. Smith, if you want to introduce your crew that's with you tonight?
Yeah, I wouldn't be standing before you if it weren't for them. And what you'll find out with me is, you get my family, too. They're a big part of what we do and what I do. And I'm excited that they're here with me today. My wife, Jennifer, she has been my assistant A.D. Our little one, as our young man said earlier, gave him a pledge. The little one is Rayleigh. She is a party looking for a place to happen. So if you want to ask some questions, she is it. Our oldest daughter is Wrigley. And if you know anything about Major League Baseball, she's named after the Chicago Cubs team. It's spelled differently, because that's my wife's compromise. But Wrigley is our daughter. Our son is named Alec, and he and his wife couldn't be here tonight. They are coaches, basketball coaches, high school basketball coaches in Arkansas. And then my sister-in-law, Phoebe, is Phil Fox.
Dr. Smith, welcome to Broken Arrow. Welcome to the family. Glad you're here. Very exciting. Next item, number eight, Ms. Dias.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Perry, President Allen, and members of the board. I have a few items for you this evening. The first one is exciting. I'd like to recommend Ms. James to take the position of Executive Director of Education Programming. As you guys know, Ms. James has been the Executive Director of Secondary Instruction. She's done an amazing job. She's been with us for five years, or is it six years? Five years. She got her five-year pin. I remember, I cheered for her. She's been here five years, done a great job in that position. But we have seen a need for some educational programming with project pathways, internships, a lot of activities we want to offer for our students. That is her strong suit. She does a great job working with teachers, counselors, principals, and we're looking forward to her using this role to just provide more opportunities for kids.
Any discussion or questions?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Ms. James, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you for this opportunity. I did realize I came to Broken Arrow, but a family we are. And I tell everybody that. I look forward to going to work. I look forward to working with our kids and our staff. This is my family, and I just, I love it here. And I appreciate this opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Sharon.
Next item, Ms. Dias.
Okay, next item. So with Ms. James taking this new opportunity, that opens up Ms. James' current position, Executive Director of Secondary Instruction. And with this position, we knew the person in mind, Mr. Tony Sappington. He was an administrator in Broken Arrow for, like, six or seven years. He left here just for another opportunity as a district leader in another district. He has experience as a principal, a teacher. He's excited to be back home in Broken Arrow. We're excited to have him here. So I'd like to recommend Mr. Tony Sappington for that position.
Any discussions or questions?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Is Mr. Sappington here?
Yes, he is.
Anything you'd like to say, Mr. Sappington? Well, welcome back. Glad you're here.
Any family?
Oh, any family tonight, Mr. Sappington?
No, my wife is, she's also my assistant A.D.
All right. Welcome back to Broken Arrow, Ms. Sappington.
Happy to have him.
Next item, Ms. Dias.
Okay, so this next position is Director of Early Childhood and Parent Engagement. We did, a few years ago, have a separate Director of Early Childhood. Ms. Hennessy has done a great job with that, along with all of her other responsibilities with the teaching and learning team. And again, as we continue to be a growing district, and we have more students coming into the district, and want to provide more opportunities, this position will be over all of our early childhood centers, early childhood, and then a parent engagement piece. We're looking for opportunities to get our parents engaged at that start of the school and keep them engaged the entire time. So at this time, I'd like to recommend Ms. Teresa Boker for that position. Ms. Boker has been a principal in our district since 2011. She's been administrator. She's been at our early childhood centers, CLP, Spring Creek, I know she's someplace, there she is. And she has a lot of experience teaching early childhood, and she comes with a lot of passion and already has a lot of ideas. So I'd like to recommend Ms. Boker for this position.
Questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Is she here this evening?
Yes, she is.
We see you have some special guests back there, so you better give them recognition. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next item, Ms. James.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, and the board. I'd like to bring forward for your consideration to offer a position of Assistant Principal at Oliver Middle School to Dietra Cleaver. Dietra's been in our district for about 12 years now. She's been a teacher. This last year, she helped us initiate a pilot program we have going. It's called Campus Intervention Specialist, in which she supported our counselors and our administrators, did a lot of leadership opportunities. To know Dietra is to know an educator. She's a strong teacher, strong instructionally, but she's also such a strong leader, and you see that in every bit of the responsibility she's taken on for us over the last few years. So I'm excited to present for your approval to offer her this job as assistant principal there.
Any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Is she here this evening?
She is. She's in the house.
Any special guests this evening?
I brought two of my three boys.
All right.
So I have Cole and Reece Cleaver. And then my oldest is finishing freshman year at OSU.
We like her more and more, OSU.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next item are comments from the public. We have none. And the next item will be general consent items 14 through 103. Any discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you. Next item. Hold on here. Mr. Leach? Sorry, it was.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. My first item is information only. Pursuant to the public sale of the vacant properties listed, the 40 acres located at South Fourth, approximately 175 feet north of East Vicksburg in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, directly east of the Freshman Academy campus. The second piece, the 1.89 acre property located on the northwest corner of East Jackson and South Third in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, directly southeast of the Education Service Center. And third, the 1.83 acre property located at the east side of South Elm in the south of West Houston Street in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. In accordance with the requirements of Oklahoma Statute Title 70, Section 5-117, after public posting, we have received no bids for the purchase of the listed properties.
Thank you. Next item.
My next item is discussion motion and vote on motion to approve or disapprove the proposal submitted by Fair Play to replace the video board and scoreboard at Memorial Stadium on the high school campus in the amount of $455,789 and would be paid out of the building fund. I recommend approval.
Ms. Leach, you know how old that board is?
Yes, sir. That board was installed in 2012.
Is 10, 11 years, is that about the normal lifetime?
Yes, ma'am. For those types of electronics, that's about the life expectancy.
What's the general maintenance that you think you guys expend on trying to keep that thing running?
That's, I'm not aware of the numbers, but I know that for every event that we have at the high school campus, we have a contract with the local vendor to have a technician on-site the whole time the event is going on, in case something goes wrong can be fixed immediately. So hopefully, we can do away with something like that.
So maybe y'all can eliminate the finger crossing right before every event or something that occurs.
See a lot of shaking of heads, like, yes, we deal with that a lot. So, well, this is exciting. Any other questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Mr. Leach.
My last item, sir, is discussion motion and vote on motion to approve or disapprove the proposal submitted by Ford AV to replace the sound system at Memorial Stadium on the high school campus in the amount of $193,846.09. This will also be paid for out of the building fund.
Thank God. Much needed, just from my own experience. Just throwing that out there.
Do I understand that this will help alleviate some of the noise going into the neighborhood?
So hopefully so, with this much higher-quality sound system than the aging system we have in place. So right now, the speakers, the sound system has to be turned up so loud just to make anything intelligible. Hopefully, we can alleviate a lot of that and get the speakers aimed a little bit better, so they're just at the grandstands and not out at the neighborhood.
I know y'all may not have this date yet, but when are we kind of anticipating the whole thing to be done with the AV system as well as the...
So that was actually a part of the RFP package, and both vendors are committed to having the project completed in time for football.
Wow. Very nice. That's good. That's quick.
Yeah.
Don't we have some, don't we have some fine arts programs? Don't we have some, don't we have some fine arts programs like the Drums of Summer and things like that there?
There are, and I've, you know, been in some discussions with Mr. Davis, and there are some rentable options that might be available that we might need to pursue if there are pieces of this that are incomplete in time for those events.
Sorry about that, Mrs. Roulette.
Keep talking.
I just wondered. Just wondering.
All right. Well, now I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Mr. Leach, thank you. Next item, 107, Mr. Bowser.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. So, this evening's item is about our classrooms and replacing some interactive displays in our classrooms. In fact, this item is for eight different elementary schools in the district. When we took a look at our allocation, our funding allocation for the technology department, felt like this is something that is very much needed for our school sites and is a good use of those funds. The cool thing about that is that while it directly impacts those eight sites, it also impacts the rest of the district as well, because the technology that we would pull out of those school sites where we have good projectors of our old smart boards and where we have good boards on the wall that are still usable, we can use those as replacements in other areas of the district. The problem that we are combating right now is that our smart boards in our classrooms is an aging infrastructure. And so, in a lot of cases, we've had to tell teachers, sorry, it's kind of dim, that's, there's not a replacement projector for that, or sorry, there's a little pixelation, but we can't buy a replacement. I mean, that, because that technology, not that they don't sell smart boards now, but the projectors and the infrastructure that we have, they don't sell those anymore. And so, this will allow us to be able to take care of elementary schools that we can't touch, middle schools, that sort of thing. So, and just to kind of give you a peek behind the curtain, if the eight-school project, which will kick off in June, if it goes well, then at the end of June, our hope is to bring the other, just bring five more elementary schools to you at the end of June. So, I'll be able to give you a progress report at that time and let you know how it's going. But I would ask for your approval tonight so that we can get this project underway.
Questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, Ms. Eniff.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. In response to the board's approval of moving forward with the video and audio package at Memorial Stadium, we need, I'm coming to you tonight to ask for a budget increase in building funds, so we can go ahead and get those funds encumbered. When the budget was presented to the board in September, at the time, the sale of the land was not a known commodity, and so that wasn't built into the budget. And so, we need to go ahead and increase for the encumbrance of those two projects.
Questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, Ms. Metavallus. You're getting down to your last couple.
I know. I'm going to make them good. I'm trying to think of something. You should be very afraid.
Yes, you did.
It is time to restock the warehouse with copy paper. I have not had to do a large bid like this and worry about this since before COVID. COVID hit, everything slowed down. Our paper usage slowed down. It is back up. So, I did bid this and would recommend your approval tonight of this purchase. This represents five truckloads for $143,640. Paper prices are escalating astronomically. I bought a single load back in February, I think, and the price was over $37 a case, which is 10 reams of paper. And so, I got a good price this time around, comparatively speaking.
Questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, President Allen, members of the board, and Mr. Perry. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support of the Transportation Department. I don't get to talk to you guys very often, so I want to give that shout out. Tonight, I'm seeking approval for the purchase of 12 buses from Holt Truck Center. These buses are currently being leased by an area school district and will become available in the fall of 2023. 10 of these buses are 71-passenger route buses, 2 are 48-passenger buses with wheelchair lifts. The cost will be $900,999 and $408. We paid from 2015 bond funds. This is a new process for us. I don't know if we've bought used buses in a very long time. So, we made sure the school attorney blessed that, that we didn't need to take sealed bids and go through that whole process. For comparison, bus prices, when I took over transportation three years ago, was less than $100,000 per bus. They're now, they're over $140,000 a bus. So, we may have to buy some used buses until the prices calm down.
Mr. Moore, with the blessing of districts attorneys, I'm assuming that so it meets the bond language, so we can make the purchase with those?
Correct.
And also, I just have a question. Do those come with warranties?
They actually come with a warranty, and we purchase an extended warranty.
Okay, awesome.
Well, I definitely want to commend you guys on being creative, especially in a tough times, when, you know, you have to look at every dollar, how you spend it, and how do you get creative with some of that? And you guys just absolutely blew this out of the water and really become creative to get quality vehicles, and you really stretched that dollar further than imaginable.
Thank you.
Outstanding job to you guys for really stepping up and making this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Saved us about half a million dollars, it looks like, just doing a little math. So, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, the buses we purchased, just so you understand how supply chain's working for us, those buses I purchased last spring cost $121,000 each, and I still haven't got them. When I first took over transportation, it was taking about 200, 210 days to get buses, and now it's taking well over a year.
That's crazy.
So, we won't have to wait on these or anything. They'll be ready to go.
Well, they'll be later in the fall, but they'll be there quicker than next summer.
Well, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next item, Ms. McNally.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. I'm here today to discuss the commodity processing fees for child nutrition for next school year. We're planning on processing with Tyson Beef and Chicken, Spuckers for Peanuts, Integrated Beef, Asian Food Solutions, Sunny Fresh Egg, Rich's Cheese, Swan's Cheese, McCain's Potatoes, Red Gold, and Genio for Turkey, for a total of $1,135,569.
Questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is new business. We have none. The next item will be moved to executive session.
Make a motion to move to executive session.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you.